Hello and welcome to the Kosh. I'm your host Timber Smith and the Kosh is a podcast that spotlights people who had an association with Oshkosh or the surrounding Fox Valley area. It's a good day today. It's like a fantastic, fantastic day. I'm super excited to be here with you, Kosh listeners, have another amazing conversation. Know that in this new year, I am going to try to be making some transitions. I'm gonna try to do things a little differently, do things a little better, but while we're figuring it out, we're gonna try to stick to, stick to what has worked so far. And so far, it seems like it works. We get pretty good feedback from, from the listeners out there. And so, but there will be changes that we're gonna be making. So don't be surprised if, if we, we drop in some new segments or drop off a segment and we start making some changes and everything. But you know what time it is? Once again, we've been blessed with an amazing, amazing guest. I don't know how we are able to get such good guests, but we do, we get really, really good guests. And this week's guest is Lindsey Erickson. Lindsey, how are you, how are you doing over there?
I'm good.
You good?
Yeah.
Alright.
How are you?
I'm, I'm doing alright. Like it's, it's a fantastic day. I'm, I'm in the middle of taking a little time away from the professional life, which
Same, yeah.
Get recharging the batteries is like a necessary thing, right?
Oh yeah, totally. But I feel, I'm feeling a little rusty, like the brain's a little slow.
Oh no, that means you've truly checked out.
Is that it?
I hope. Look, I, I don't think the brain is slow. I just say the brain has finally said, enough of that work stuff.
Yeah, like this is the right pace.
This is the right pace. This is actually when, when you are supposed to check out and you know, it's really hard to check out nowadays, right? Because what I do, and I don't recommend this for anybody out there, is I never shut my email down. I never put the email, you know how people put the email out and they're like, I'm outta here for the next so many days and duh, 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 duh. No, I don't because you know what? I'd rather answer them and not come back to like, the world is burning than to shut off the world and then I come back and it's like boom.
Hits you.
Yeah, just, you know, it's just very much like a slap in the face. Ooh, just like that. So I don't, I don't want any slaps in the face with a bunch of emails. So that, that's kinda like, I just go ahead and handle it.
So you, you don't have like an automatic response?
I'd, no.
No?
Well, I mean, I have one because I mean, we use Microsoft Office like the rest of the world, but I refuse to put it on because I'm just like, I'd rather just do it. Because usually I'm not getting so many emails in during that time because I tend to take breaks when everyone takes breaks.
True, yeah.
So those one or two emails that filter in, I don't mind just going ahead and, and you know, and it's like one or two emails a day. I just go ahead and answer those and then they're not sitting there lingering.
True, yeah. I like that. I did, I took the approach this time of deleting my mail app from my, my phone. Like, don't even look at it.
Bruh, seriously? You deleted your mail app? Like just full fledged?
I did, yeah.
How's that working?
Not great.
I do, does it give you anxiety?
Yes. Yeah, it took me a couple of days to like not just compulsively check it.
Yeah.
It's, it's rough.
Yeah, yeah. You're, you're bold. I admire you. That, that's some different type of stuff. I can't, I can't do it.
Yeah, I understand. I might have to go back and forth, different techniques.
Different, different techniques. Alright, so Lindsey, can you please share a little something about yourself and what is your connection to the Kosh?
Yeah, so thanks for having me on. So my connection to the Kosh, I am currently serving my first term on the Oshkosh City Council.
Whoa.
Yeah, so I was elected in April of 2020, right as things were kind of getting serious with COVID. But I've been in Oshkosh. I came in 2014 for work. I did AmeriCorps, which I think you also have a connection to.
Yes, I, I did do AmeriCorps. I did Lightage, I believe it was Lightage, I wanna say Lightage Street House, but I know that's not it.
Schoolhouse?
Lightage Schoolhouse. I did Lightage Schoolhouse, yeah.
Nice. Yeah, so I did AmeriCorps. It's a state program through Wisconsin Health Corps. So I did that for two years right after college at the Winnebago County Health Department, which I'm still currently employed at. So I've been there, just finished my, how long have I been there? Seven years.
Nice.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so I came for AmeriCorps and you know, that program, I, I've worked mostly, my background in college was psychology and gender and women's studies. So in AmeriCorps, I worked in the high schools doing a program called the Wellness Screen. So it's a mental health screening for students and just kind of a checkup, how they're doing with stress and sleep and you know, if they're experiencing anything around anxiety or depression. And then really just like having conversations with them of how they're doing and how we can help get them connected to help. So that was, that was the majority of my work with AmeriCorps, you know, doing some substance use prevention work and working with youth. And after two years, I took a position working on substance use prevention and now I work on transportation and housing access.
Oh, okay. Now that's, that's pretty important stuff right there.
Yeah, yeah, just a little bit.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, hey, that goes hand in hand. People, you need, you need a way to get around in case you don't have vehicles. And even, and even if you got a vehicle, you still need the good ways for things to flow. And we all need a place to stay.
Yeah, we all need shelter and a place where we can call home and be ourselves. And you know, I think reflecting back on how I got into this kind of work, I think, you know, I grew up kind of in a more rural area in New London, not too far from here, but that's where my parents are still at. And just thinking about, you know, growing up kind of working class, we experienced a lot of, you know, car problems and difficulties, having to commute to get to work or school and living in a rural area without any kind of public transit. If you didn't have a car, you know, you had to walk or bike or figure out, you know, how to share a car or something. So, and then, you know, some close family members who have experienced homelessness and substance use and all of the things that can really impact a person's life and their ability to be in a community and feel like they belong. So that's, you know, that's how I kind of, that passion grew and I really wanna kind of focus on those issues and figure out how can we help everyone thrive in a community.
So you, you, you went down this road because it was super close to home?
Yeah, mm-hmm. And I think at first I didn't wanna, wanna admit it, but you know, you kind of realize how the experiences that you've had growing up shape your perspectives and shape how you think about problems. And it really led me into how do we fix this at a broader level, working on policy change and systems change so that we can help more people.
I think that's the secret that a lot of people don't understand is like, where the things really get done is at that policy level. Like creating that, getting involved in like local government and stuff and, and creating policy and programming to truly make, make life better. Cause I mean, that is the purpose and point of local government. It is truly, it is not like federal government. It is local government. It's truly about those people living locally.
Exactly. Yeah. And you know, the personal is political and it's all about, you know, everything's tied back to policy or a decision that got made by a group of people or one person. And so it's, you know, I wanna shape who's involved in making those decisions, whose voices are at the table, what information do we have when we're making those decisions? And you know, it's, it's a long process, but we've gotta make sure that people feel involved, are involved and are heard in the process.
Do you feel, because you, you've said, we're, we're on year two in, in city council, right? Do you feel you've had that opportunity with our, with our local government and being one of our representatives on our city council?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we've made a lot of progress. When I first got elected and the reason that I ran was really because I saw how important it was for anyone, everyday people to be involved and feel like they can come to city council meetings or email us, the city council members, call us up and just talk about their experiences and see how that can shape how we make decisions. And so that's been my goal and I'm hoping that I've done it well is, you know, I show up and I, I listen. You know, I'm not up there to just kind of, you know, talk everyone's ear off and talk about what I know. I'm there to learn from people about what they're going through and how we can change things.
Well, that's where it really starts, right? Because it's a, it's a representative position and, and being a true representative and I, and I worry about this at times, of people, of, of the people who are representing the people, having their own agendas and not listening. Or that whoever their surrounding circle is, is so exclusive that they're missing a lot of voices. And that worries me because there's a lot of voices out there and there, there's a lot of diversity in, in, in how the world is seen or what, what needs are. And, and when that, I'm always like, who's out there representing things that I think are important?
Yeah. And you know, we, in Oshkosh City Council, there's seven of us, including a mayor. And you know, we all, I think that's what's important about representation. You know, you can't expect one person to be able to represent or have the same experiences as everyone in the city.
Correct.
But hopefully we have enough representation where we all can kind of, we have these different pockets that we are a part of and we have experienced and have perspective on, that when we come together, we can really represent the entire city.
I like that. I like that a lot. Oh, and big fat shout out to Mayor Palmieri, girl. Yes. Alright, if you haven't listened to that episode of the Kosh with the mayor on, please do. It is, she's on fire. Alright, you ready to jump into the first segment?
Let's do it.
Alright, first segment, what in the world is going on with? This is your opportunity. Start with that statement, what in the world is going on with? And you tell us what's going on. What's on your mind?
Oh boy. Okay, so the thing that's been on my mind this week personally, so what's going on with how expensive car repairs are and the cost it takes to maintain having your own access to transportation?
Seriously, that is a fact. Well, you know what? Here's what I'm gonna say. That is a fact for many of you, but I've got this mechanic who is like the bomb, diggity bomb. And you know what? I wanna send a shout out to the business, but you know what? I don't want y'all taking up my spot. So I don't know if I'm gonna share because I do, but no, you know what? I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna go ahead and share this with Kosh listeners because you know, we know here at the Kosh, if you don't know about Mark's Tire and Auto in Nima Kai Road.
Need to write this down.
That's right. Mark's Tire and Auto, Mark. Mark has been servicing our vehicles. As a matter of fact, I don't even talk to Mark. My wife handles our car stuff, which tells you everything. Mark is, not only he is an amazing gentleman, he is about as honest as honest gets and, and Mark keeps it 100. And I've been going to Mark's, we have been going to Mark's, I think for like 15 years or so, but like this dude is the dude of dudes. So like, if you don't know about Mark's Tire and Auto in Nima Kai, I'm, I'm giving y'all a secret. Don't be hogging up my spot with my mechanic, y'all. I'm just telling y'all now. Bruh, seriously.
It's some good insider info.
It is good. And because he's affordable. And, and you know what Mark also does? Mark tells you the truth. So if it's something that is like, yeah, that really doesn't need to get fixed right now, we're gonna do this, that, and another, he will tell you exactly that. And then he will handle what needs to be handled and then give you an opportunity to make decisions about other things later. But he, I'm, I swear by Mark's Tire and Auto.
Nice.
Yes.
Like it.
Yes. Okay, no, I'm sorry. Go on. So, so, so what else is going on? Why, why car repairs?
So I've had this car for, well, actually when I was in AmeriCorps, you know, you make very little money, if at all.
Facts.
So I bought this car. So I've had it seven years and I feel like the repairs have been, you know, increasing a bit. Just replaced, I know some car things from having to deal with all this stuff, but you know, like a catalytic converter, what, what did they just have done? The mass airflow sensor? That was the latest thing. So driving home after being at my parents for Christmas, drove all the way to Oshkosh and my car was acting kind of funny. You know, the like RPM thing was going up and down, felt like it was gonna die on me. Parked it and then just out of curiosity, tried to turn it on again. Nothing.
Bruh.
So got it towed, you know, all the things, kind of a hefty car repair bill. But the people I do go to, I do like them. You know, they like explain it. And like you said, if it's not necessary, they're, they'll give me the option to not, you know, do it, but still, man, cars are expensive. So now it's like, is it costing too much in repairs that I should just kind of?
Get a car.
Move on.
Yeah. I don't know. How old is the car?
It's 2011.
2011, okay.
So it's hitting the two-year mark. I'm at like 140,000 miles.
And it's a what kind of car?
Nissan.
Alright, okay. So I'm gonna put this out there to the Kosh listeners. Hey, Kosh listeners, please, what do you think? Is it time for Lindsey to get a new car? Please email us at askthakosh@gmail.com. I'm gonna actually, please do, because I'm gonna totally share whatever the feedback is with Lindsey.
I need help.
Yeah, I'm feeling you. Okay, so if you were gonna get a new car, what would you get?
Well, okay, so I'm gonna totally lean into the stereotype, but I, I love Subarus.
Ooh.
I want like a big dog in the back with some like National Park stickers on the back Subaru.
Oh, you, you really did go for the stereotype.
Yep. Mm-hmm. Like a kayak on the top? That's, that's it.
That's it. Bruh, I almost bought one.
Oh, what held you back?
It, because the, they are, and first of all, so Kosh listeners, if you didn't know, I bought a car during this time when I got the new job, right? So I started going back and forth to Appleton. I needed a new vehicle. So I was like, alright, let me go get this car. And I was, I was so hung up, I was gonna get a sports truck. Like, I love those Subaru sports trucks, right? And I was like, alright, gotta get one, right? But I was also at the height of the pricey used car deal. And I was like, ah, so I found one and here's what my choice was. My choice was to either buy this Subaru that had like about 80 to 90,000 miles. It was a beautiful sports truck and they, they had some pretty good extra options that they added on to it, prior owners, right? Cause I'm buying used, I'm definitely not buying new. Or I could buy a Mazda CX3 with, with literally 50,000 to 60,000 less miles and more bells and whistles. And I, you know, I'm not gonna lie. And here's the thing, I actually went so far as to put, put the deposit down on the Subaru and I was driving off the lot and it was like a day or two before I was actually gonna take, take the Subaru. And I found, and, and I drove past the Mazda and I was like, let me see how much this is. And I saw it and it was literally, I think it was a, a couple of thousand less or a thousand less. And with all those less miles, I was like, this is a no brainer. I'm finna get this Mazda. And I mean, if you really do the research on Mazdas, their reliability is ridiculous.
Yeah.
They're up there. They're, they're not, it's not like, not, not necessarily Toyota or Honda, but they're not far behind. Those things run forever. So I was like, I'm gonna run with a Mazda.
Yeah, okay. I might have to look that up now.
I'm not, I'm gonna hook you up.
Yeah.
See, see Kosh listeners, if you didn't know, not only are we entertaining, we are informative. We got good info here at the Kosh.
Good stuff. I just need like good, reliable recommendations.
Oh, I got you. I got you. Hey, matter of fact, and Kosh listeners out there, don't hesitate sending those emails. And we are gonna help Lindsey with the car situation. Alright? And if there's any other mechanics out there, even nobody's gonna match Mark, I'm just gonna say, right now. Alright, my what in the world is going on with, what in the world is going on with poop-filled yards? I'm not even lying about this. So there is, you know, first of all, Bosco, the podcast dog, that is what we're gonna call him, or Naughty Bosco, that is also the other name for him in our household. Bosco, there, when I take him for a walk every day, there is one yard that they got two dogs, not big dogs, small dogs, like a little smaller than Bosco even. And they, they, they don't pick up their poop. It's just a yard full of poop. And I'm not talking about the backyard because I'm not walking in the backyard. I'm talking about the front yard and the terrace area. And there's just poop everywhere, right? And you know what works it even worse? What makes it even worse is like, if Bosco tries to go poop in that area, then I've gotta try to maneuver through their poop-filled yard to pick up his poop, even though they got a ton of poop already there.
Minefield.
It's a minefield. And it makes me feel some kind of way. Like, I understand that your personal property is your personal property, but come on now, you can't, you can't just pick up the, the poops, especially if you got two, two little, little ones.
Yeah, I mean, not that big, right?
No, no. I mean, you know, a couple, you know, get your plastic bag game on, you know, a couple grabs, couple grabs.
Yeah, I mean, in the spring, when all the snow melts, that's gonna be.
Well, this was, this is, the bad part is this, this was from the summer. So the poop's there, right? And there's minefields everywhere. And I, I don't think, like, I don't think they've picked it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, ever.
Is that a new like fertilizer thing they're going for?
Well, I will say this, they are new, newer to the neighborhood. They, they moved in this summer and they're very nice people, like them. They always, always say hi to Bosco and myself and, and the wife when we walk by, but their, their yard is a minefield. And I'm just like, good God, don't do that to us. Because you know, if Bosco decides he's gonna drop a mine, then I gotta maneuver through your mines.
Right. And then if you step in it, it's, that's, that's not good.
It's just not good.
No.
Right? And even though, and, and, and to be honest, Bosco doesn't usually poop there. But he has once or twice. And then I wanna be respectful and follow the rules and pick up the poop. But I'm, I'm looking at the other 42 pieces of poop that's sitting out there on the front yard. And I'm just like, good God.
Yeah, that's, that's a whole situation.
What in the world is going on with? Hmm, hmm, okay. Lindsey, you didn't think you were gonna have to talk about dog poop today?
I know. How did I get stuck with the episode about poop? I mean, I do love dogs. And I mean,
It's, it's, it's part of the game.
I have wondered, like, what do dogs think as we're picking up their poop? Like, it, do they process what's going on?
They're probably saying, good job, human.
Yeah.
Good job, human.
What I thought.
Alright, we're on to the next segment. Next segment is word association. This is where I'm gonna say a word and you tell me what comes to mind. Food.
Hmm, um, so I recently just bought a Dutch oven, like a kind of nice, like, what do they call it? Enamelled cast iron Dutch oven kind of thing. And I made some bread for the first time, like homemade bread. So my place spelled, smelled amazing.
Okay, what kind of bread was it? Just bread, bread?
Like straight, just, I wanted to just test it out. So it was like a no knead, plain white bread, but maybe kind of sourdough, like yeasty bread. So, but tonight I'm making a beef stew in it. So pretty excited about that.
Okay, yeah, Dutch oven.
Yeah, it's kind of old school, right?
Um, you know, I've never really understood what they're used for. If you, I mean, I know what it is, but I never understood totally 100% what the, what people use them for.
Yeah, I'm still learning. I'm not totally sure either. It sounds like there's a lot of like stews, like if you wanna roast a meat and keep it very, I hate the word moist, then, then that's great.
Do you hate the word moist?
I don't know. Some people do, yeah.
Some people feel some kind of way about that word, but you know what? It, it, I don't know why, but you know what? If we're talking about beef stew, I think it's fair. It's fair game. Yeah, I think it's fair game. Alright, and since you brought it up, and now that I know you wanna test out this Dutch oven, I just want you to know that I would, I am a beef stew connoisseur. So, so if you just actually wanna, yeah, you know, I'm just saying, I'm not above it. And I would like to share with the Kosh listeners about Lindsey's beef stew.
I mean, I might have to, you know, test out some recipes, like get it down.
I'll give you time.
Okay, I did get some good meat though. Wasita meats.
Ooh. That sounds fantastic.
Bougie meat, yeah.
Well, you know, if you're gonna do it, do, do the things.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
I want good stew. It's good stuff.
Okay, cocktail or beer?
Um, so I actually, I, I don't drink, but I'm totally good with people who do, safely, you know. But I did bring my, my mug of chai here. So I'm a, I'm a chai and hot chocolate connoisseur. So I don't know if there's any cocktails that involve that kind of stuff.
Well, no, we can skip the content. Let's talk about this favorite drink of chai.
Yeah.
And hot cocoa. How do we, how do we, what does it look like if you're truly doing it the way that you like it done?
I have strong feelings about this.
Uh-oh, uh-oh, bruh.
Especially hot, hot cocoa. So it's gotta be made with milk. Or if you're, you know, can't do lactose, a good oat milk for sure. And then, so I'm gonna get a little frou frou here. I do get this, it's like a, they're like, what do they call them? Little like nuggets of chocolate?
Oh.
From this place in Madison. Pretty good chocolate.
Are you importing your chocolate?
I am. I literally will go down to Madison, you know, they have another meeting and just kind of stop on by and get some hot chocolate. So it's, it's my one joy in life.
I like that.
Yeah, um, so it's gotta be, yeah, like real good chocolate. I'm not, I won't turn my nose up to like just good old Swiss miss. I mean, at a, you know, ice rink or something with just a Styrofoam cup of hot chocolate. That's a good time.
That's a good, you know what that is? That is childhood nostalgia at its best.
Yeah.
I'm feeling it. Okay, hot cocoa, chai tea. Any other teas? Cause I'm actually, I'm big on tea. I drink a lot of tea.
Um, I, I want to like tea, like all teas. It's still kind of tastes like, like just brown water to me sometimes. So.
You're not doing any of the good fruity tea then?
No, I, I like a, I like chamomile tea.
Ooh, I do too.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
But that's about it. Yeah, I know. It's weird.
Okay.
Yeah.
Streaming.
So I've been into a lot of, I have a lot of comfort TV shows right now that I just kind of keep rewatching because I just can't handle anything new right now.
You know what? I've never heard that term, comfort TV. That, that, you, you need to, that there.
That's it?
That's it. That, that's big. That's a term.
Yeah, that's what it feels like. I just gotta keep rewatching these things because I know exactly what's gonna happen. No surprises. So currently on my, however many rewatches of Ted Lasso, Apple TV, highly recommend it. I've, I've got a few people hooked on it. So it's like, just a good, good show. It's about like British football or soccer, but it's not so much about the sport, but like how groups of people come together and like, you know, be the best versions of themselves and get some mental health stuff in there. So it's good.
I keep hearing Ted Lasso. I've never seen an episode.
Yeah, it's good.
It's good.
Mm-hmm. Like right, the right amount of like humor with just good life stuff, humans.
Humans. I like that.
Yeah. And then the other show, I don't know if I can say it. Can I swear on, on this?
Hey, the, yes, I'll, I'll put a.
Well, it's, it's a name of the show, but Schitt's Creek.
Oh, I don't think they're swearing.
Yeah, it's the name of the town. Right. The name of the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the other one. Just like, yeah, it just makes me happy.
Okay, I like that. Alright, fantastic. That's another one. I Okay, I like that. Alright, fantastic. That's another one. I, I've heard good things about it, but I've never seen an episode. But I'm feeling you on this. Now you've, you've got me very much thinking about this term comfort. Comfort TV.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a real thing.
It is a real thing. You know what mine is?
What?
Hallmark Christmas movies.
Yeah.
Yeah, those Christmas movies, I don't care. You can judge me if you won't, podcast listeners. But I'm telling you right now, there's nothing better than a great Hallmark Christmas movie to brighten the day and to make you happy.
Yeah, it's, and it's just, you know, like the same, not the same, but it's expectable. Like you know what's gonna probably happen.
Usually.
They go back to their hometown and their ex from high school opened up a bakery and that's what happens.
Oh, my God, that's like literally the one that I watched before you came here.
I, I actually have not seen many of them. Uh, so you might, I need some of those recommendations.
I can hook you up with that.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, oh, Parks and Rec two.
Oh.
It's a comfort TV show.
My daughter loves that. That's a good one.
Yeah, I mean, as someone who works in local government, it, it explains it pretty well.
Um, as somebody who has started working in local government also, um, there's some truths in there.
Yeah.
That's all I'm gonna say.
They, they got it pretty close.
Yeah, there's some truths in there. They're, they're not far off.
Nope.
Okay, um, shop local.
Uh, so I think you've had a few people on this podcast to talk about the Ashkosh Food Co-op.
Absolutely. Yes, and we've had, yeah, we, we, and we've, um, and multiple people who've been on the board, um, yeah. That, 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 the food co-op is amazing.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Uh, yeah, and I think shout out to, like, the people who work there are just amazing.
Yes.
Like Maddie and North and Brandon at the, the front, the checkout. Like, they just remember who you are. At this point, well, I go in like a few times a week. And they, they just remember my name now. I should, I don't even have to like say my number anymore.
Oh, they just know.
Yeah.
I like that.
There's Lindsay again. Fineer bougie hot chocolate and oat milk.
Oh, wow, you know, that's not the worst thing, is right?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I do also like, uh, Kits and File. So I live pretty close to there and one of my favorite pastimes is just, uh, kind of walking up and down the aisles of Kits and File, just like finding random stuff. I love like the smell of a hardware store.
Yeah, no, I, I, for whatever reason, I get that.
Yeah.
At least, and particularly Kits and File.
Yeah.
I had, um, a prior guess that we had just had this conversation about Kits and File and I, and, and my thing is about Kits and File is this. I love that you can ask, there's always those two dudes in there, one or two of them. And you can ask them anything, and they know where it's at in Kits and File. Like, you could be like, I need this screw where the threads go backwards and it's black and it's uh, three inches long. And then they'll be like, oh, yeah, it's in the side, let me walk you over here. And I'm just like, how? How do you know this?
I know. Like of all the things that they have in that store, and they just know exactly what you're talking about. Amazing.
It is amazing. Shout out to Kits and File. Alright, and for the food co-op, shout out to Doug and Miranda back there making that food all yummy and things.
So good. I had some, uh, quesadillas last week, I think, from there. Stuff.
Yeah, okay. I can't say that, uh, uh, I get to go in there enough, but I really, really like the establishment. Super good.
Yeah.
Local government.
Uh, to me, I think the, the beauty of local government is how, how local it is. You know, people can directly impact what happens in their community. Um, and it's, you know, I think the easiest way for people to get involved in their community. And for people, you know, those of us who are on city council or on boards and commissions, like we're neighbors in the community, we're the people down your street, we're friends, we're family. Um, so if it's, you know, any issue from streets, which we hear a lot about in Ashkosh or, um, you know, access to parks or, uh, you know, being able to go to the library, access to transit. Um, that's how people can make really direct change. Like, all you have to do is, you know, find somebody on city council or on a board or commission or city staff and just have a conversation. Um, you know, I think other levels of government, it's not necessarily as accessible. Um, so to me, local government, it's about community and, uh, engaging and listening to what's going on in your community.
I like that. I think one of the most important things that, um, people need to know is like, uh, it's not necessarily just about the council. Like, those boards and commissions, those are, and, and are those appointed here?
So you can apply to be on a board or commission, and then the mayor, uh, receives all those applications. And then, uh, she will, uh, recommend people to certain boards and commissions and then council approves it.
Okay, alright. And I know it's different in different places, so, um, so I mean, those boards and commissions, those are great opportunities also. Um, to really make change because they're the ones that often make the recommendation to council about the changes, uh, locally. You know, get involved, um, and check it out. Is there, uh, in, I don't expect you to just notice off the top of your head, but I'm gonna ask anyway. Oh, no. Is there a centralized place where you can find out which, uh, positions are available on those?
Yeah.
Boards and commissions?
Yeah, so if you go to the city's website, under the government tab, there's a boards and commissions, uh, uh, link. You can go right on there. It lists all the different boards and commissions, who's on it. And then I think there's up at the top, there's a link that you can apply online or see which boards have vacancies. And then that's how you can apply. And I think even if there's a board that you're really interested in, say, you know, we have a sustainability advisory board. If you're really wanting to be on that, but it looks like it's full, you can still apply. And then when there is a vacancy.
Right.
They'll have your application.
Right, people drop off of those things, uh, all the time, life happens. Alright.
Yeah.
Resolutions.
Uh, um, I'm not a huge New Year's resolutions person.
Nope.
Um, tried it, didn't really, didn't work. I mean, as we all do, I think, you know, the like, I'm gonna go to the gym more often, I'm gonna read a book every month or something, you know.
Right.
I'm more for like intentions, maybe, like I, maybe it's a little softer, but, uh, yeah, just, you know, reflecting on the last year and kind of what do you wanna bring into the next year and you know, how, how do you wanna live your life?
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we, have we made any?
Um, I think, yeah, coming into this next year, so obviously, you know, I'm running for reelection, I'm finishing up grad school.
Ooh.
Fingers crossed.
Didn't I know about this grad school? Wait, we gotta come back and talk about that, but let.
Yeah, we'll, we'll circle back.
We'll circle back.
And, yeah, so, you know, there's some stuff going on. So I think I'm, I'm really focusing on what I can do and how I show up to things.
That's good.
Yeah.
I like that.
Thanks.
Okay, um, okay, now, since we've, uh, before we jump into the next thing, let's circle back to the grad school.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
So, uh, I'm in my last, or will be in my last semester of masters in public administration. So I think you had Stephanie Gilden Van on earlier. She's, she just finished.
She just graduated.
Kudos to her.
Kudos.
See her celebrating and I, I can see the light at the end of the tunnel. Like, it's, I'm almost there.
It's a great program.
It is.
Yeah, it's a fantastic program. I've known a, quite a number of people who have gone through it. Um, yeah, it is a solid, solid program.
Yeah, I think, it's just, you know, I, I compared a few different programs when I was deciding, should I go back? And I really like how this program is really focused on, you know, local government or kind of smaller units of government and community engagement and incorporating equity into government practices and nonprofit, so it's been good.
Shout out to UWO, once again, doing an amazing job out here, uh, educating our residents and our citizenry around here. Um, alright, ready for the next seg?
Yes.
The Kosh Hidden Gems, this is your opportunity to share something around Ashkosh that you think is special. Um, that people may or may not know about, or maybe they just don't know how good it is.
Hmm, mm-hmm. So I would say, I have, well, I have a few. But, um, I've been really loving the Riverwalk.
Ooh, yes.
So I, I try, one of my intentions for the next year is to be better about walking every morning, uh, along the Riverwalk. I live pretty close. Um, and it's just cool to see how it changes, you know, throughout the year. You know, like the river's been kind of frozen a little bit off and on, and there's still some birds out there. And it's just, um, I think it's a big asset that we have.
I agree. That Riverwalk is amazing. And since they've developed it, I mean, it's just really, really amazing now. And I mean, there's a good stretch you can walk.
Yeah, yeah. My favorite part is kind of on the, the south side of the river, there's the old railroad bridge. Uh, kind of newer part of the Riverwalk, so, um, and there's some big cottonwood trees, uh, in the summer. It's just, it's perfect.
Yeah.
I like it. So, um, my other one is, uh, out by Asylum Point. Um, there's a little trail back there that there's some big, uh, oak trees, I think, that, um, sometimes I'll bring, bring my hammock out there in a good book and just like string up my hammock and be right next to the water.
Some mental health time.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
Yeah.
I love asylum. That's, that is the, that is one of the secret fishing holes.
Oh, okay. I'm not, I, I did not know that. I'm not much of a fisher, but.
You gotta work on that.
I know.
Yeah, well, well, added to the list. As you can tell, Lindsay has come in and we are going to hook her up with all sorts of things. By the time she leaves, she will have a great mechanic or a new car and all sorts of other things that we have spoken about today.
New hobby.
New hobby, yes. What's the Kosh need?
Yeah, um, so one of my, the areas that I focus on is affordable housing. So I think we've been hearing about this more and more, especially this last year with COVID.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as a renter myself, over the last, you know, few years that I've lived here, five years. Um, it's, I've seen how my, my own rent has increased around twenty percent over the last five years.
Bruh.
So, and we've, we've seen that, uh, across the board. And the city's coming out with a housing study, early January, there's gonna be some public presentations about it that have kind of bringing together data about what, what can we do, what do we need about housing in Ashkosh? And I think what we're finding is really for the, those who are kind of in that very low income bracket, there's not enough housing. And, you know, we've, we've known this and we've heard stories and experiences from people, um, but I think it's time that we actually do something about it. I think, uh, you know, we've done a lot to build more rental housing. Um, a lot of those units have been kind of more unaffordable or on the higher price range of things.
Yeah, they're super, like, they're pricey. I mean, there, there's no ifs, ands, or buts. I mean, it's cheaper, uh, I'm, I look at some of that and I'm like, oh my God, the amount of that. And I'm gonna assume that people don't buy houses because they might not have the down payment to buy the house. Uh, because the housing, the housing, um, payment would be, a mortgage would be cheaper than these, these, these rental payments.
Mm-hmm, and that's, like, that's the boat that I'm in. It's like, you know, we're kind of forced to, you know, everybody needs housing. We all need shelter.
Correct.
And so, you know, when you're kind of a, just starting out in your career, trying to find a place to live, you find a rental. Um, and you, you call it your home, hopefully, right? These are people's homes. And we end up having to pay more and more. And I, I get the, the market that we're in and that landlords are also trying to survive in all of this.
Absolutely.
And it's, it's tough when also, you know, at some point, it would be great to own my own home. Um, but it's tough to keep up when you're trying to pay rent and, you know, work full time and pay for grad school and pay off student loans. And, uh, then also try to figure out how do I, how do I start saving for a down payment, along with car repairs and everything else?
Oh, my God, bruh. That, that struggle is so real. Everything, everything you just mentioned, that is, that's a lot. That's a chunk of change.
Yeah, and that's, that's reality for people. And, um, you know, I think we've seen with COVID. Uh, so there's been rental assistance for folks who've been behind on rent or, uh, you know, lost their job because of COVID. Um, and we just got the numbers from Advocap and it was, uh, just around like four million dollars have been uh, given out in Winnebago County to, uh, renters for past due or currently due rent. Um, and I think the average amount that a household is receiving is around just under four thousand dollars. So it's, it's a significant amount of money that people have been behind. And this money goes directly to their landlord uh, to try to, you know, get them back up to not be, having to owe rent. Um, but it's, it's a huge issue. People are struggling. Um, and I think we, we really need to focus some, some energy and some dollars on building more housing on all ends of the spectrum, very low income to higher income. Um, and making sure that we have enough housing to meet the needs of people who live here.
Yes, I, I couldn't agree more. And that is so true. And I only know some of this just because, uh, I, I peek out there every once in a while and, um, you know, and just it, and I look at what rentals go for and I'm just like, you know, I got a daughter who's gonna be moving out, you know, soon. And I'm just like, good God, I don't even know how you, how you, you balanced all of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I mean, and thinking back in college, you know, I lived in a apartment, a three, three bedroom apartment with six other people and still was paying, I think around like five hundred dollars a month per person.
Oh, well, you know, campus housing, there's a little, yeah, that's a whole nother conversation. I'm not even gonna go down that road. Alright, uh, affordable, well, agreed. The Kosh needs more options for housing. Um, particularly affordable, uh, literally affordable housing. Like I, 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 me personally, I feel like we've got plenty of options for, um, what I would say is, I don't know even a good term to call it. Let's just say, um, regular housing pricing.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Yeah, and it, you know, it should be a third of your income goes towards housing. Um, so when rents and housing costs keep going up, but wages aren't keeping up with that.
Yeah, I'm looking at some of these, uh, rentals and like, for some people, that's half.
Yeah.
If, if not more than half, actually.
Mm-hmm, and especially if they have a large family or, you know, somebody who might have mobility needs, that they need an accessible unit. It's, it's tough, yeah.
Okay, um, the next segment is the Naughty slash Heroes Corner. This is your opportunity to nominate, whatever you wanna nominate. It could be a person, a thing, uh, um, organization to either the Naughty or the Heroes Corner. So what do you have?
I will say, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go with the Heroes Corner. Um, so I just turned in my nomination, nomination signatures, uh, for running for city council. That's to actually get on the ballot.
Nice, how many did you have to give?
Uh, you have to give at least a hundred.
Okay, is that a hundred for new people or is that just a hundred for, because you are an incumbent?
It's for anybody. So if you wanna be on the ballot, whether you're an incumbent or not, you have to get at least a hundred.
Okay.
So, so I wanna give a, a kudos, huge, uh, thank you to people who get involved in, um, you know, local elections. I had a, a few people help out with collecting signatures with me and just people who can have conversations with their neighbors about, you know, letting them know when the election is, who's running, uh, what issues are kind of most important. And just like listening, kind of what's going on, getting a pulse of, what do people care about? What are they concerned about? What do they love about living in Ashkosh? What do they wish they could change? Um, so just, uh, you know, the, the people. Um, so just to, you know, the, the people who get involved, talk to their neighbors and, and really work to, to make some changes in the city.
Okay. I like that.
Thanks.
All right. I normally don't do a naughty slash Heroes Corner, but I'm going to do one today. And there's a special reason why. I'd like to uh, for the Heroes Corner, I'd like to recognize the particularly um, the school board for, for the naming of the new school um, to Val Phillips. Um, that's kind of a big deal. You know, that's a really big deal here in Oshkosh to, to have one of our educational institutions for our children. Um, to be named for, after a uh, an amazing person of color from Wisconsin. Um, and that, and, and for our school board. Um, special shout out out there to uh, Chris Kearns um, for making that happen. I, it gives me chills. And you know, I've, I've lived here in the Kosh for thirty years and, and from where we've come to today.
Yeah.
It makes me, it makes me smile. It makes me happy. And that's, it's kind of a big, big deal.
Yeah, it is. I mean, talk about representation and I think she was one of the first or the first uh, woman city council member in Milwaukee, I think. And it's just, it, I think it's really amazing. And for, for kids to be able to learn about who she was and and have that representation, it's awesome.
Yes, no doubt. Once again, uh, Kosh listeners, as you can tell, we uh, yes, we, it is Bosco, the podcast dog doing Bosco things. Uh, yes, and by now everybody knows. We, just so you know that in the future, we are going to have a segment dedicated to Bosco, the podcast dog. Because I'm not gonna lie, he does something naughty almost every day. And half of it is totally hilarious. And so I, I think we're gonna start posting some, some content and talking about Bosco, the podcast dog.
Yeah, he just wants his voice heard.
Uh, that, he, he, you know what? I, if anybody, he's been on more episodes than anyone.
He's like your, your sidekick.
He's, he's, he's Bosco. He's special. All right, well, now it's time to get down to the real deal. It is topic of the week time. So, um, just so I remind uh, Kosh listeners, the topic of the week is chosen by the guest. And um, this week's topic of the week is housing and homelessness, which I think that's right on par, right? We're segmenting right over into it.
It's perfect.
It's perfect. All right.
Yeah, so, so this has been a topic, you know, we've talked about it a little bit already, but um, I think at the city level, homelessness has been kind of a, a prior, has been a priority. Um, it's one of the, the goals that we set up for our city manager this past year and will continue into the, into twenty twenty-two. Um, and if you've been kind of following what's been going on within the city, uh, we've seen an increase of homelessness um, within the city and, you know, across the nation with COVID. A lot of people who, you know, experienced job loss or unexpected um, medical bills or just things that have happened over the last two years, um, are now finding themselves potentially without shelter. Um, you know, day by day warming shelter, they've been at capacity. They have a capacity of around twenty-five. Uh, and they've had to turn away people almost every night since they've been open this, this season in uh, October fifteenth. So it's, it's real, um, and it's, it's people, it's our neighbors, it's our friends, family. Um, and so, you know, with day by day here, we have Father Carr Shelter and Christine Anne Domestic Abuse. Um, you know, day by day is looking at potentially uh, building a new facility that would expand how many people they can serve to, you know, fifty to sixty people. Um, so they've been going through the process with the city to, to do that. Um, you know, and I think kind of being part of those conversations, I think it's been, been really uh, encouraging to see how many people have been supportive of um, day by day, you know, and doing the work that they're doing. They've, they've helped a lot of people. Um, and we're also seeing some of the, you know, the NIMBY-ism of people who have been a bit resistant to that um, with the location that they're going into. Um, so yeah, I wanted to bring that up and I think it's uh, for me, it's been a uh, really helpful to get to know people and actually listen to people who are experiencing homelessness or who have gone without shelter. Um, like I said before, I've had a close family member go through that and um, it's, it's one thing to make assumptions about people who go through this, but it's another to actually get to know them and, and listen to what they've gone through.
Agreed. Um, recently I've had the opportunity in my new position to uh, be part of the Point in Contact count. And to go out and to actually meet our homeless. Um, and what I can say is this, um, they're good people. Just good people and, and, and tough circumstance. And I, and I got an opportunity to have like good quality conversation. And, and I got an opportunity to remember, which I am not one that tend, that tends to forget, if anything, I try to remind other people that um, these are humans and, and there's humanity there and, and when you see them, smile, look them in the eye, talk to them, treat them not like they're invisible, but treat them as if they matter because they do, because they're humans and they're good people. Um, we all have tough times and some of us are able to have resources or people with resources that are able to help us. And not everybody has those cushions or those parachutes to, to get us there. And so um, in the Point of Contact, I, 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 in the Point of Contact count is a count that everyone um, across the state, I don't know if it's state or nation, but
It's nation, yeah.
I, I, it might be the nation. And there's one night where every city goes out and they go to find and take a count of their homeless. And also um, offer them resources and, and things and, and try to, try to interview them and, and actually get them, get a record for them and then connect them with resources to help them. Um, and I went um, and it was the night of a major storm. It was like this crazy storm that was rolling in. Um, and so we were in the parking ramps and we, we found, uh, we found thirty-five people. Thirty-five, thirty-six people and, and I had these conversations and, and it changed my, well, it didn't change my view, but it changed my heart. And what I mean by that is like, it was the, it was the ultimate reminder that these are people. These are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are the people we share, we share a community with and they matter. And we need to, there's no reason we can't find some resources to help.
Yep, exactly.
So.
Everybody deserves a place to call home and shelter and to feel that they belong in a community.
Yes, yes. That is so true.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I mean, I, I've worked a little bit with some of the people who work at Day by Day and you know, talking with the people who stay there. It's, it's true that they're people, they're, they've gone through tough circumstances, trying to dig themselves out of the hole and um, you know, I think it's time for us to recognize that it's our responsibility as a city to, to take that seriously, to listen to them. And provide them a place to go, you know, a place that they can be and feel comfortable and safe. Um, and have access to resources and services and uh, not have to be, you know, out in the open uh, in the middle of storms and bad weather. Um, so I'm, I'm excited to see, you know, where things go and be a part of the decisions that get made with day by day. And um, I'm glad to see more people talking about this and more people considering and listening to people who've gone through this and hearing their stories.
Yeah, it's a lot harder than um, many people think. Um, what I've learned and, and I'm part of a um, I'm in a group right now whose focus is on young homelessness, youth homelessness, uh, eighteen through twenty-four. And there's just things you just don't even think about, like um, the fact of like, when you don't have a place to store your stuff. So people have been kind and may have given them really nice things, but every time they find a place to stay and then they've got to rush out or they get kicked out, they lose all that stuff. So then they're starting over from zero again. Or their paperwork. Um, we've talked to homeless people who they, because they didn't have, they don't have a stable place, they lose things like their birth certificate or their identification or ways to identify themselves. And then what do you do when you can't identify yourself? Um, that makes for a really hard way to get a job. Can't get a job without ID nowadays, ever.
Run along like an address, so you know.
Or anything, right?
Yeah.
And so um, there's definitely things that, and, and my other thing is technology. This is something I talked to our homeless group about, um, was you, you can't apply for a lot of jobs paper anymore. Everything is tech. So if you don't have access to the technology, and that's just the truth right now, like uh, there's so many places, just your regular jobs, like a pick and save or, or whatever. Um, you have to apply online. And if you don't have online access, you, let's say, I don't know about you, but I really wouldn't want to try to complete an application on a phone because I can't see the, I can't see the print. Cause I'm blind. Um, or um, other things, um, just things of that sort, uh, other places that only have electronic application, like that just makes for a tough circumstance.
Hmm, yeah, and I mean, I think that's why places like our public library, that's, that's so important. You know, that's where people go to be able to get access to the internet or use computers or printers or you know, whatever they might need and, and have people there who can help walk them through those steps too.
And what happens when they close that, like for COVID?
Yep, yeah, that's exactly what we saw. Where do people go?
Right, so um, I love this topic. Such a good topic.
Yeah, it's, it's complicated.
It is complicated.
Hmm.
And you can't assume, uh, what I hate is the assumption, like, there was homeless people that I was talking to who had jobs. They had jobs, they're still homeless.
Yep.
Cause they, 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 they were doing the best they could, but they still couldn't build up enough money to actually afford an apartment.
Hmm.
Cause you know, first month's rent and rent itself, you know?
Yeah, some places are requiring, you know, four months of rent upfront.
And if that rent's a grand.
Yeah.
You know, that's no joke.
Yep, yeah, it's tough.
All right, anything else you would like to say about that?
Yeah, I think if, if people, you know, I, I want to hear from people too. So um, you know, if people have thoughts on uh, what we need in Oshkosh related to housing, um, I think I've been working with a group called Esther. Uh, they're a social justice, community organizing group, faith-based.
Esther goes hard. They don't play.
They are awesome. So we're working with them on um, collecting some stories, hopefully in the next few months of people who've been experiencing housing insecurity and homelessness. Um, and so we wanna, we really want to dig into what's going on in Oshkosh and what are some of those policy solutions that we can, we can really work on? How can we focus? Where, where should we focus funding um, and make better decisions to improve access to housing?
All right, um, how would you like people to reach out to you?
Uh, so they can, I'm happy to uh, talk over the phone. They can find all my contact info on the, the city's website.
Okay.
On the city council page.
Uh, we'll put it in the podcast notes also.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, always happy to have a conversation or meet up for coffee or, you know, go for a walk or email, whatever people want to do.
Okay.
Yeah.
That sounds fantastic.
Nice.
All right, um, well, it's that time, um, where we start winding down the show.
It went by so quick.
Well, you know, and believe it or not, it, it was not quick. We covered a lot of amazing things though.
We did.
Yeah, yeah, we did. And so, you know, once again, um, Kosh listeners out there, I appreciate you so much. Thank you so, so much for uh, sharing your time with us. Um, taking the time to listen and, and connecting. We, we appreciate it more than you know. Uh, we are a work in progress. I say this all the time. We are a work in progress. We are constantly trying to improve just for the sake of improving. Uh, I just want to do an amazing job on behalf of uh, our Kosh listeners. So please, 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 if you have listened to this episode and something struck you, uh, you've got something to say, you want to share, maybe you want to be a guest, maybe you've got something you would like to share. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us at askthakosh@gmail.com. Once again, that is askthakosh@gmail.com. Um, we are, I, and, and people who know, know. I answer all emails personally. And if you email me to get in contact with one of our guests, I am more than happy to share whatever you want to share. Um, because they, they love the feedback also. What do you think?
Yes.
Fair, all right. Oh, so, um, you know what time it is?
No.
It's my favorite time of the show. It is shout out time. All right, so Lindsay, what do you got for, what you got, what you got for the shout outs?
Um, I think, you know, like sticking with the, the theme we've had today, I think just uh, reflecting and recognizing the people who've been uh, experiencing some tough times over this last year, especially during the holidays. So just a shout out to people, you know, trying to make it by and uh, you know, maybe struggling throughout the holidays. Just wanting to let people know that you're seen and heard and um, I think we're, I'm, I'm here to listen. So want to shout out to people who um, are trying to find community in Oshkosh. Um, we're trying to build that, so.
Facts. I love that. All right. Uh, my shout outs, uh, let me give some special shout outs. I want to give a special shout out to the mayor of Appleton, my boss, cause he's boss. That is just the way that is. I just want to make sure I put that out there. And also to the, I know this is the Kosh, but I'm also gonna send a shout out to the uh, city of Appleton team of people. Uh, all six hundred and forty-four, y'all, y'all special, y'all awesome, y'all are amazing, y'all make things work. I can't stress that enough. I am so proud and privileged to be part of that special team in so many, so many ways. And, and, and I'm not just saying that to say that, like it's, it's, they're amazing.
Yeah, people who work for the city are awesome.
Yeah, yeah, they are. No, no doubt. Um, shout out to Harold Carpenter, who just put in my garage door and did an excellent job. And the young man who put in my garage door, big shout out to you, big fella, cause, and I say big fella because my man was like six foot three foe, something like that. He made me feel short. I'm good with that though. I'm, I'm, I really don't have a complex. It is what it is.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, he was just awesome. He was just awesome and super friendly and made sure that he explained everything and hooked up all our needs. So if y'all out there looking for garage doors and whatnots, um, Harold Carpenter, good, good, good service.
Yeah, we're just full of recommendations today.
Um, I, you know, it's, but it's the Kosh, like I just try to hook us up, you know, it's regional. We need to know who does good work and whatnot. And um, you know, and part of the change that we're going to start making in the new year, I hope, is uh, we're gonna get, we're gonna get uh, some sponsors. We're gonna, and I don't mean sponsors for the sake of money. I mean, just because I want to make a better podcast. And they say, you should have like a break every thirty minutes. And we just roll.
Yeah.
Right? We just roll. So I'm gonna get some breaks and I'm going to actually, um, if you're a business out there and you would like a spot, I'm not even charging for these spots for the first go around. I'm just creating spots, cause I just want to see how this works. Um, I'm gonna do that, but I give shout outs all the time, cause if you do great work, someone should say it.
Yeah, recognize good people.
Recognize good people, recognize great business. All right, and my uh, last shout out grows to uh, Cr- Christopher Kearns, hey man, you know. Chris, Christopher Kearns, hey, man, you know, you know, great work, man. That's all I can say. Great, great work. Super, super proud. So, all right. And we are on to the last thing, which is the parting words of wisdom. So Lindsay, what do you have for the parting words of wisdom?
Put my, my wise hat on for a second. I think it's really, you know, getting to know people who have lived different circumstances than yourself. And getting to know different perspectives and different backgrounds.
Agreed. What do you think? Have a good time?
I did, it was fun.
Yeah, buddy. All right. You know what time it is, y'all. I appreciate you all.